Call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen, October 19th, 2020. We're transmitting via Zoom from our remote location in the auditorium. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is anyone reporting the meeting other than us? So, we have no, we have no meeting minutes? No. First item on the agenda is a meeting with the Advisory Committee, the Treasurer and Accountant, to discuss the warrant articles and the how we'll use the, how we agree to use the free cash. I would want to bring this up because, two things. At the annual town meeting, we had said that we would use the free cash to take care of some of those things that we weren't able to do then, and there was no mention at the time of raising appropriate money. And the second thing was, I don't think the people, that the voters, when they come, they appreciate the context of this. We vote, kind of vote on all these articles separately, and I don't know if there's a way to make them understand that, you know, if you vote 200,000 for this, there's less for this, if you vote 100,000 for that, there's less for this, and I don't know how we do that, so.
In the past, we've had a handout, a one-page handout, listing the different amounts and then the, how it would affect at the bottom. We can certainly get that together this week, so people can take one with them. Hopefully get it up on time for the website, give it to Bob as well. So, a one-sheet recap of what this means.
Right. I mean, we can certainly do that, which we've done in the past, but I think to, the larger issue of context, I mean, that's something that we have discussed ad infinitum. How do you get people to understand how it all works and how we pay for that? And I don't think there's any shortcut for that. I mean, you basically have to sit down, you have to roll up your sleeves, and you have to plow through the numbers. Otherwise, it doesn't make any sense. I don't think, I don't think there's an easy shortcut to give somebody a comprehensive understanding of the town finances.
So, we have 435, 640? Or 670? 435, 6?
I just have 435.
635.
And had you prepared recommendations before we had to postpone?
No.
No?
We, advisory has not had any further discussions, and we certainly haven't had any vote in terms of what recommendations are on any of the articles.
So, as it's, but there was, there were some, so we want to put money into the stabilization, because we took money out the last, significant amount last time. We want to put money into the reserve fund for the advisory. We want to pay, we want to pay for the conservation fund. We have the tree issue $100,000, and the treasurer is suggesting that we put a sum of money towards the short-term debt. Correct? Correct. Okay. So, do we have any figures for that?
Oh, the figures that we've been talking about. You know, we have been using a number of 50,000 for the cruisers. I mean, that number has been kicked back and forth in terms of whether we pay for it out of, out of free cash, whether we do it partly out of the road detail account and partly out of free cash. That decision hasn't been made, and I don't think the issue has changed. I don't know if any further information has been brought, you know, to the table on this. It's just a matter of making a decision on it. 100,000 for the trees, I think that's a number that's been pretty well-established, and I think we have enough confidence in Dana to know that he'll do what he needs to do, and, you know, if there's something left over, it'll get returned to free cash. Conservation, $1,000, and that's, that's an annual appropriation. Reserve fund, the 20,000, that just brings the reserve account up to the 25,000, which again is the standard. So, there's really nothing unusual about any of those requests. That totals 171,000. The, the question is what we do with balance of it, and we've had a recommendation from Dick to apply 190,000 to the short-term debt, which, I don't know, Cliff, if you had weighed in on that or not, the short-term debt issue.
I'm committed to doing one-third. I've been in agreement with Richard on that right along. My concern, you have to pardon my voice, my concern has been that if we don't take care of this now, we may have to be, we may be facing some debt in the not-too-distant future, which may then have to piggyback on this. Sooner we can get rid of the short-term debt, which is not excludable, it's all within the tax rate, once we get rid of that, then we might be able, you know, now we can face the other debt that we're going to be facing, and it's out there. I mean, between fire, council on aging, who knows what? You know, I've heard rumbles of a fire truck, and you know, they're always kind of rolling around and referring to that. I'm in total agreement with Richard, one-third of that. We have to keep in mind that none of this affects the tax rate, except the amount that we vote to reduce the tax rate. We are already, based on current valuations, which are conservative, and based on the activity that we had, town meeting in, I think it was in June, I was going to say May, we're, we're under 2.5 and pretty good under 2.5 as we sit right now, and that's with a conservative estimate on valuations. So, I don't see any need, yes, okay, put in the balance whatever we need into stabilization, split that between stabilization and reducing the tax rate, make a decision on the cruiser, which is going to affect down, down the line, what we do with the rest of the money. It's a pleasant place to be in, to be able to tell folks, look, we can do these problems. We can solve these problems. We have the funds, and we can do this without affecting your, your tax rate.
Okay. So, but if we, if we have 171,000 for those, the cruiser, the 100,000 for the trees, and then we have 190,000 to lower the short-term debt, we put 200,000 into the stabilization, that's what was talked about, that's 561, but we only have 435 in free cash.
No way we can put $200,000 into stabilization. No. We would, we would take that, the balance of the math and decide, Tom will recommend the decision, and I'm not on advisory, by the way, but the advisory will recommend what to do or how to handle that balance of funds.
So, excuse me, Cliff, so is it better to lower the short-term debt or put more into stabilization?
Oh.
You can't do that.
That's where it comes back to the whole issue of balance.
Well, here's the other thing, 171 included the 50 for the cruiser, which at least 25 is coming from a detailed account, not free cash, and I still think we have a decision to make whether we recommend all 50 from the detail and not take it from free cash.
Don, you asked the question whether it was better to put the money into stabilization or to pay debt. The truth is, it makes absolutely no difference, it does exactly the same thing. The reason that we're paying off debt and putting money back into stabilization is last year, we spent about 1.3 million in non-reoccurring expenses, the radio, the highway department, the dump truck, and the trees, and we put about a third of that on last year's tax rate, and the, the other two-thirds, we split between stabilization and debt. The inference, at least, if not commitment, at that town meeting was that we would pay that back over the next two or three years. So, basically, we're taking the leftover money after managing the expenditures and the tax rate, and we're splitting it between the two. I don't really care what the split is, because they have the same effect. They prepare us for the future. The Cliff has eloquently said we should be worried about, because we don't know what the downturn is in the future. You, if...
So, more in stabilization doesn't like increase our, help our bond rating or anything like that, or, I mean, we're with, I remember the last time you said that we're within the percentage that the state likes.
We're, we're, we're low, we're, we're not exactly as good as we should be, but we're okay, and paying down the debt and putting down money, putting money back in stabilization has the same net effect on our health. It really doesn't matter.
It's like paying off a credit card and still having your mortgage on your house, but you're paying on that.
Exactly. And if, you were talking about 200 in stabilization, actually, that is possible if the cruiser is split, 25 and 25, it would only require $38,000 to bring the tax rate down to 2.5% by my calculations. Throw 190 in the debt, and that leaves you 207,000 that you could put into stabilization. The other, that's shooting for a 2.5% tax, uh, tax increase. Every $14,000 that you add to reducing the tax rate, that you don't put into stabilization or debt, is a tenth of a percent lower on the tax rate, and that's what the advisory committee would have to decide.
Now, one other thing, Dan, we talked about before, was that we didn't restore the cuts to payment, and that really hasn't been part of our talk, because that was another 100,000 that we'd have to put in. There really is consideration going forward, but fortunately, I think the highway superintendent has said we really don't have any shocking projects that need to be done that he can't handle with what we funded already, and with the state, assuming their check clears.
Actually, the roads, the roads are in good shape.
They are in good shape.
Quite noticeable.
But I think on our radar has to be, it's not a cover to deliver to whoever.
Right.
We owe it to the town, we restore that money when we can.
A question I had was, with the federal grant being denied for the highway department, are we looking at any additional funds?
Fire.
For the fire department, yes. Are we looking at any additional funds now for remediation, either temporary or prominent at the firehouse?
You know, we got a number from, right?
Yeah, we got a number.
High 40s?
Yeah. We're looking at, I would say no right now.
Yeah, the update was 49.
Yeah.
So, in terms of, in terms of our discussion about free cash and allocations, we're not, we don't have to concern ourselves with the firehouse issue at this point.
At this point, I think we're committed to no action.
No action.
So, it's really just a question of, you know, well, it's actually two questions. One is how much, if any, raise and appropriate, and, and the allocation between stabilization and reducing the tax rate.
I still go back to the cruiser thing, Article 1. I don't see why it's a bad idea to have the police department pay for their whole cruiser out of their detail fund. And Cliff, you may have some, you know, feeling on that. I mean, it's their money, it's the cruiser, but the one thing is, it is the annual cruiser, and the town has an obligation to pay some of the annual cruiser. If it was a second cruiser, I'd be all about them paying the entire thing, but it's not their money. The money came from their activity, but it's general fund money that's been reserved anyways. Right. So, I... But it's under that line, and basically, it's under that account, at least detail.
Right. But it's not their money, it came from their activity.
Right.
So, they have no say in how we spend it, it belongs to the town.
I agree. So, we could take that as a revenue source for lending.
Absolutely.
Someday, someday, if you want to, you can sweep it if you wish.
Absolutely.
Right. So, why not pay the whole thing out of it?
Don?
So, what, what?
Better question. Has the advisory committee taken a position on the amount of overlay surplus? It's $274,000, which is kind of eye-popping.
Advisory has not taken a position on it, we have discussed it, we're aware of it, and actually, I believe, if I recall, the procedure is the board has to send a letter to the assessors requesting that money be released, and the assessors have to vote on it in order for that money to become available. Is that the procedure?
A letter has been sent.
By, by the board?
But our board decided not to pursue it. I did send a letter on behalf of the board, I think in February.
Advisory, we're aware that that money is out there, you know, that, which is a good thing. It's, it's a separate type of a savings account, if you will, but by the same token, it does seem as though it's overfunded at this point. I mean, in discussions with the assessors, it doesn't sound as though there are any significant pending appeals where, you know, any, any significant amount of money is at issue. So, I mean, it would seem to me that, you know, probably 200,000 of that can be freed up, but, you know, I see Cliff kind of shaking his head. I mean, well, the reason, and the reason I think is because we will be needing that money, it's just a question of when.
Right. So, why tap into it now when, as Cliff had said, we're going to have potential needs in the future, and to know that's there, as you said before, is prudent.
And the goal over the years has been to try to, try to minimize or blunt any increases, any spikes in the tax rate, and things like the overlay account allow us that capacity. So, you know, if next year or the year after, we're, you know, we're short on the revenue side, that fund we know is available to tap either in whole or in part to, to level out that increase. So, I mean, we haven't taken a position, we're aware of it, and frankly, you know, in this current go-around, I don't see that we'd be bringing that into this discussion.
Right. If you could, whether Dick, Cliff, yourself, about the raise and appropriate part, and my understanding is that's all just to make sure our levy number continues to mature, if you will, even though it has the same negative, no effect per se on the tax rate.
Yeah, I wouldn't get hung up on the raise and appropriate language, I've heard it mentioned a couple of times here, because basically, we're piling on and then we're, we're taking off. It's, it's, it's strictly a mechanical operation. Job one for the people managing the town, everyone in this room and some of those that aren't, is to manage the expenditures, and I think the town has done a pretty good job on that this year. The next thing to think about is to manage the tax rate. What are we looking for here? And historically, we've done best when we've kept that 2.4, 2.5% every year. Our expenses do go up that much every year. After that, it's a mechanical exercise. That's where the people who are not the policy people, like myself really, that's where we just do the math and make it come out the way that you want it. You know, occasionally, there's, you know, everybody wants to spend as much, buy all the good things we want and not have the taxes go up, and unfortunately, that's sometimes unrealistic. We've done a pretty good job of managing the rate. You know, we went back, I, I can go back and look at quite a few years' rates here. 2017, some, we took our eye off the ball for some reason, and we actually had the rate go down 0.3%. I promise you that no one came into the tax collector's office and thanked us for that, but as a result of that, in 2018, the rate went up 3.681%. Trust me, there was noise, because we didn't do a good job in those two years on managing that rate to be a predictable, reasonable increase, and I think that really should be our goal, to be predictable and reasonable and not be jumping the rates up and down.
Well, if, if we have the, if we have the raise and appropriate, say 100,000 for the trees, is that just, is that more than 435,000, or is that going to be, you know, is that, you know what I'm saying? You know, sometimes we say raise appropriate or transfer, or, you know...
And anything that's raised and appropriated is on top of the 435.
So, why would we do that?
It's a question of, of capacity.
Well...
If we do the raise and appro...
If we have the money to do it, you know...
If we do the raise and appropriates that are recommended, and then do the, the small transfer from free cash, that will target you at the 2.5% tax increase. As I said, you can't, please don't get hung up on the mechanics of what's in a raise and appropriate. If we don't have this town meeting, actually, our tax rate's going to be less than a 2.5% increase, based on what we did in the spring, because when we did all the math, that's where it comes out.
Somebody else will take care of the trees and won't accomplish any of the things we need.
Right.
Can I interject something?
Keep in mind, yeah, I heard something.
Can I interject something? This is Kathy Pestalino from the advisory board. Thank you all for meeting in person. Unfortunately, a number of us were uncomfortable coming to Town Hall today, but although I appreciate all of your concerns, I have to, um, go with the treasurer's recommendation of having 190,000 to reduce the short-term debt, I have to also, um, lobby for splitting the cost of the cruiser, which unfortunately for us is coming at not the most ideal time. So, if we can spend half of free cash and half of the savings that Cliff has recommended, I think that that's the most prudent thing to do. The tax rate will be reduced, and short-term debt will be paid down by 190,000 dollars, and I think that, um, having the budgetary experience that I do, having served on the advisory board a number of years ago, that, you know, Cliff and, and Dick's recommendation should be taken very seriously, and we shouldn't really be playing around with what we should do with free cash. I think we have a substantial amount of money going back into free cash, and I think that the voters, the legislative body, again, this is a direct democracy, would be appreciative of the fact that we are trying to reduce the tax rate during this very difficult time, paying down the short-term debt, and trying to project what the needs of the town are going to be in, you know, in the forthcoming years. And, you know, there's a lot of unknown expenses, and, you know, we have the fire station, and I, I just think that the recommendations of the town accountant and the town treasurer need to be really taken seriously. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. Cliff?
Couple of things, you know, apropos of the fact that Springtown meeting still left us under 2.5, and that was dumping 330,000 into an ambulance situation. If we didn't have that, we'd have been in considerably better rate position from a tax rate point. I'm not disagreeing with the ambulance. I, we, unfortunately, on two occasions, my wife's had to use it, but, so, just to point out that, you know, we're in, you know, we're doing well. You know, this town has managed well, it handled its funds well, it looks at everything from all kinds of different ways, to the point that we could add 330,000 to the rate. The year before, we added 300,000 for the, for the highway department, okay? Cliff, I guess is still on the table now, but, you know, we've managed well. I, I'm not, I did shake my head when you mentioned the, the stimulus or the surplus reserve, and the concern I had there was is that we had so much outstanding taxes at the first of the year, fiscal year, from the carryover from the previous year, we do all kinds of different problems, okay? So, that'll play into how much is available, but that's always something that's available at Springtown meeting, should something like the fire station pop up that you want to deal with or some other way. That is a source of, it's not a source of revenue, because we've already collected that money, it's a source of available funds. We're not, we wouldn't be asking for more money, we would be just reallocating it internally. So, I, I just take a look at this whole picture, and, you know, I think we've done well, we're doing well, the town's in good physical, fiscal shape, and here we are, able to look at, quote, unquote, pony up how we're going to spend excess money.
All right. Anything else?
Just, just quickly, Dick, just, Cliff, do you have an opinion on the raise and appropriate versus using free cash?
No, I, I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of any raise and appropriate.
I don't understand that, Cliff.
Well, I don't think, when I say raise and appropriate, I hear... You're doing a great job, though.
Anytime I hear raise and appropriate, that means take money from the taxpayer, taxpayer and use it, all right? I'm in favor of using available funds, which is our surplus, what we've got here now. So, I'm, I'm always in favor, right now anyway, of saying, let's use our available funds. I don't want, I, I mean, I'm evangelizing it one way or the other, but when we say raise money, that means put it in the tax rate and do something. At this point, I would just say, let's just use our free cash and divvy it up whichever way we end up with the best. That's what I mean, Richard.
What do you feel about the levy, even the levy moving, though, it's always important not to give away too much of the levy capacity? Other ways to do it?
Okay, I'm, we're, I think we're still...
I was going to say pay, can I just use...
That's possible. Here's my question. Now, the advisory committee is going to make a recommendation to the town meeting, so here's my question for the selectmen. Are you com, you know, let's get away from the mechanics of it at this point, and let's, let's go for what the end result is. Are you comfortable with the four purchases that we're talking about here, the cruiser, the trees, the, the reserve fund, and the conservation fund? Are you, are you comfortable with those expenditures as a group? And, and then the second question I have for you is, are you comfortable, what is the, what is your desire on the tax rate? What would you recommend to the advisory committee? You know, as I was saying, I've been preaching for 2.5 because that's kind of the mean, but if they have those two pieces of information, I think that they can take that into consideration when they make their recommendation.
So, my personal view would take the, be to take the 435 and divide it up between those four things, whichever way you see, without using raise and appropriate.
You're not answering my question, Don.
My question was, are you comfortable with the four expenditures that we're talking about adding?
The four expenditures are trees, stabilization...
No. Trees, cruiser, reserve, and conservation. Those are the new items. I'm not talking about that right now. We don't need to talk about that right now.
The four again?
100,000 for trees.
Yeah.
50,000 for a cruiser.
Yeah.
$1,000 for conservation, and $20,000 to bring the reserve fund up to its normal funding level.
Yes.
Okay. Second question, what do you want the tax rate to be?
As low as possible.
That's really a nice political answer. Now, think about the fact that you're a fiscal manager for the town.
Well, I think personally, again, I have to say, I don't like the word raise and appropriate, and if we can take the 435,000 and divide it up into those four or five things, that's fine.
I'm sorry, the premise of the question is wrong. You are focusing on the mechanics of achieving the goal. If you will tell me what your goal is, we will get you there. Well, maybe we will. Maybe we will disagree.
So, the goal, so my goal would be the cruiser, and I would, if, if it was up to me, I would take it all out of the, all out of the...
Let me put it this way, I think we came out of town meeting roughly 2.5 up. We're walking into a special town meeting with more expenditures, and if we can walk out of there with no increase to the tax rate, then I think that's a win. We spent more money, but didn't increase the tax rate. To me, that's, that's the bottom line.
That's wonderful, but you don't even know what the tax rate is right now.
No, but I hear...
So, what do you want?
I hear from you that the potential of 2.5, you know, leaving annual and then leaving special.
So, it just, okay, so, I, I, nobody's disagreeing with those four expenditures? Okay, that's good. We're halfway home. I'm sorry. What do you want, what is, when you balance the needs of the people...
2.5% or less.
Great.
We're done here. Forget about the mechanics. So, that's what I'm saying, so if we can, as you said, we walked out of the annual town meeting at this number...
Don, you've got...
Okay. We walked out of the annual town meeting with roughly this number, we have more expenditures to do, we can pay down some debt, we can put money in stabilization, and still walk away with no greater increase in the tax rate than the annual, to me, we're doing our job.
That's a win.
What do you think? Ariella? That's kind of where I'm coming in. If you guys know the nuts and bolts to it, great, trust us. You explain to us, and we're just three...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, Nixon, I heard that.
One question I did have...
I still, although I still lobby for the cruiser, you know, that's what we're...
Yeah.
One, one question I did have, and I'm not sure which of you, or both of you, would would have...
One question I did have, and I'm not sure which of you, both of you would have the answer, is of the 435 in free cash, how much of it was unexpended funds and how much of it was excess revenue?
Yes. Somebody took the love lost outside.
All of you both. I can't, I don't have those numbers. Come prepared to answer that question. But, all right.
Most of that number was unused appropriations because of the economy and the effect of activity, especially in the motor vehicle. So most of the money that we're seeing here, I would say a third of it was probably, two thirds of it was probably funds returned unused, which I'll go on a little soapbox here if I have another moment. We've been very, 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 very favored by our departments because if they don't spend, they're not forced to spend all their money as it gets down to the end of the year. Or you don't get it next year because you didn't spend it last year. We've never looked, I say the advisory board and the selectmen have never looked at the budget that way. If they turn over money, it's because there was good management, there was a need that wasn't met, et cetera, it wasn't need, a need that didn't have to be met. And we don't have a situation where everybody's racing to Staples or some other place to spend all their money. So that really goes back to the people that work for the town and the departments that manage themselves. And that's, to me, when you look at where we're at, it starts there. And they don't, we don't penalize them. So I say, I've never seen them get penalized. No, I think you saw in the spring, Don and Marielle worked at the budget for utilities, et cetera, looked at places we could say based on usage. But again, supplies, appropriations, things like that, we defer to the departments that, you know, they know what they're doing. We're not here to micromanage. So that's not something we do.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
When I've always gone to these meetings, to town meetings, oh, I'm sorry, when I've always gone to town meetings, is there a way, and there probably isn't, where all of this can be done earlier so that the public can get the information and try to digest it? When you get it walking in, I mean, there are a lot of people that are better at this than I am, but it's difficult for me to digest it all. And also, the second piece is, is there a way we could educate the public on what all those terms mean? Which I would be happy to do something with that if you wanted me to.
Let me start with the second question first.
I saw, they're on the front of the book.
Inside the green sheets.
Yeah, yeah.
There is a glossary, which I suggest most people aren't even aware is in there, and that's been in there forever.
Yeah, forever, forever.
And it's a brief description of each of the terms. Because there are terms about it. I mean, the idea of free cash is a silly term. I mean, you know, as John has said, it's not free and it's not cash.
But what I was thinking, for example, just as an educational tool, is if you've got 15 of these items, 15 of these terms, if you did three at a meeting and you went into some depth or some something, and then say, next week, we're going to have a quiz, guys, so everybody tell me what levy is, because they don't understand, and then they just criticize.
To answer your question, of course, it could be done. Nancy Zibert put together a group, what, three or four years ago, maybe? And I think Cliff Hewitt, that was Saturday morning, it was right in here. And there was maybe half dozen people showed up.
It was pretty big.
So I mean, you know, the efforts have been made, but you know, for whatever reason, there just isn't a lot of receptivity to it. To answer your first question in terms of whether the, you know, the numbers can be prepared further in advance, I think the fact that we're here tonight answers that question. I mean, it's always, you know, bringing it down to the wire because there's always adjustments to what is needed. So.
Is it because of the decision-making process or has the business figures changed? It seems to me most of the time, the decision-making process.
Well, the decision-making process changes to, the decision-making process changes to reflect the reality of what's going on in the town. So, I mean, you know, the idea of the fire department possibly needing money, I mean, you know, if they needed some money, then these numbers would all shift around. Now, could we close, if you would, earlier? Of course. Does that advantage the town? I don't think so. Because I think the town benefits from as much flexibility as possible as we go through these discussions. That's my view.
Well, I think they do benefit from that, but the thing I notice is many people coming to the meeting don't have a firm grasp of the rules. It's mind-blowing. Okay, thank you.
We await your recommendation.
Well, see, now we have Kathy's suggestion that we take the recommendation of the treasurer and the accountant now. Now, we're going to have them do an arm wrestle and figure out who wins. It's just a discussion of figuring it out.
And just the mechanics.
I mean, just so everybody's aware, I mean, this goes on every year, and it has for as long as I've been involved. You know, there's this constant shuffling and allocations and judgments made. And in my experience, in the long run, it all comes out in the wash. Because the town, the taxpayers are the ones that benefit, whether we're paying down debt, whether we're putting money into savings, whether we're reducing tax rate, whatever it is. And if it's not done now, the money's available for the next go-round. And so it all comes out in the wash.
I heard that cough.
I just want to say that that cough is a side effect of the medication I'm taking.
Oh, great. The chairman's on drugs.
All right.
Can I just say one thing?
I want pressure medication. I wonder why.
Kathy wants to say something else.
Sorry. My apologies. And please, I forgot to introduce myself to the Board of Selectmen. My name is Kathy Albano-Pesolano, and I was, hi, John. I've been on the advisory committee years ago, the chairman for a number of years. Actually, at my suggestion, Mr. Petullo appointed both Doug Boyd and Carolyn Fitzgerald to the advisory board. But I just want to say that witnessing and listening in on your discussions, I think that the advisory board, based on our preliminary, and we haven't voted on anything, and we will discuss it further after your meeting, and again, prior to the town meeting, that we are in agreement on many of the things that need to be done. Short-term debt, free cash, lowering the tax rate. And it's our goal to put the town in as good of a financial position as possible, given all of the effects of COVID, and certainly not to hold department heads to the fire if they haven't expended all of their appropriations because of just. So I don't think that that should really be a concern, because obviously, you have a very intelligent and educated advisory board, as well as a select board, and we're all, I think we're all working towards a common goal, which is to do the best thing we can for the citizens of Hamden. And I think we've achieved all of that with the articles and hopefully the decisions that the advisory board will make when we meet, prior to devote on the articles to, you know, at the special town meeting. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
That's what I'm saying. The next item on our agenda is the fire department ventilation system. Do we have a new quote?
Yes. The company that quoted originally has returned, looked at the system, and gave us a second quote of $49,000. This project will be in the range of 50, so it's going to be an advertised bid. If we go out again, I know you wanted me to get a couple of bids from a different, several different firms. I did ask the chief to do that. He said, well, for now, the best estimate would be the estimate from this company, which has done work for the town before, and the fire department, and a company that he thinks is fairly reliable.
And what is the system? What is the?
A ventilation system that would ventilate the building, particularly where the trucks are. And so when the diesels start up, the pollution that usually occurs.
Is it that plymer system, or is it just a big fan exhaust, a big?
No, it's a plymer system.
Plymer system.
Yes.
Where the hooks up to the?
Correct.
My understanding, it's also on combi, so I'm not sure.
Oh, we might be able to buy on combis. I haven't looked for a combi.
Right. I believe they are, and that would also help you with the 30B requirement, because they're already supposed to be, it's like being on GSA contract, you just. So if you did appropriate the money, Don, that work could go right off without, you know, having advertised or anything, something to consider.
Did the chief say anything about the interim before this project gets undertaken? If we do this project before it gets undertaken, what they want to do with the?
No.
Fire department?
No.
Because my understanding is not only is it, the diesel fuel affects the equipment as well.
It does.
That it affects the?
Yes.
Gear that they wear and things like that.
And I know you had questioned the cost estimate at $65,000. When I spoke with the chief about that, he pointed out that there might be an OSHA requirement to wash down the walls, to remove any residue, and to repaint the interior. And so that would be an additional cost. Also, the electrical system cannot support what is proposed, and so they'd have to upgrade the electrical system. And so that explains in part the higher-than-expected cost.
Yeah, they said they were willing to do the painting and washing themselves, but I think the electrical upgrade, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, it's a 100 amp service there, believe it or not.
It's a 100 amp.
Yeah, so.
It's a 100 amp.
So what house nowadays doesn't have at least 200 typically? I might give Don, we did have a full discussion with advisors about funding and stuff like that, but it sounds like we're talking about a number that's not exorbitant, 50, maybe even we ask for 60, a little over. And why don't we work harder with asking the assessors for 60,000 from overlay reserve? That really doesn't affect anything we discussed with advisory tonight. And really put it on them. They've got almost 300,000, I don't think, and with no requirements, let's get that, ask them for 60, get a letter back from us. And Bob, you said you sent them a letter.
I did send a letter asking them to declare a surplus. At the time, Carolyn said, how much do you think you want? And we had this discussion, and we decided not to go forward out of concern that next year, we're going to need every penny we have. But that's a huge surplus, and it's effectively another.
I think it's realistic that we ask for just this amount from that. The wording of our warrant article will support that type of motion, so we haven't done anything that's not advertised already.
Correct.
And maybe I would suggest that.
Yeah.
See if we can get that done between now and then.
It realizes it changes nothing in our discussion with advisory.
Yeah.
You know, the other most, because we have no action.
That's right.
We're not raising appropriations, we're not taking the free cash. We have this account out there. Cliff is quite right, it's nice to know we have for next year if we need it, but we're only tapping it for roughly 20%. And so it's a pretty big number.
And we'll be adding more next year, incidentally.
I promise you.
I would say that this is a significant expenditure, and I believe that we haven't made a determination as to what we're going to do with it. And along those lines, we had discussed doing a survey, you know, of people to see what their wages were for the town. And I did draft and share with Mr. Mark Humpin, we give a topic to each of you, the type of survey, this is all revisable, and doesn't have to be, the wording can change, and we can, we can do whatever we decide we want to do. But it gives four options relative to what to do with the fire department as a department, where they, first, people can either endorse it or not endorse it, and then rank the four of them, which way would they go, which would be their first choice, second choice, third choice, and then at the bottom, to give a position on whether the fire station should be renovated, enlarged with an addition, or replaced with a new station. We had said we would do this in the form of a questionnaire originally, started with the scribe, and then we sort of, sort of Mr. Mark and I, we were talking, sort of evolved into, at the voting booth. And today, Mr. Mark suggested that we could use the town meeting as a dry run, to see how the people respond, did we get responses, did they take it seriously, you know, all those kinds of things. So that, I think, might be one piece of this decision relative to what we're going to do with the ventilation.
I did speak with the receptionist today, and she said that people coming in to vote actually come to her first. And so I said, well, if we do go forward with this, we'll put that right on the counter up there, and then put a container where people can just do the checking and then drop it into the basket.
We had started with a full-page questionnaire, and then we shortened it down to something that would take somebody five minutes, not even five minutes, I don't think, but, and it says they can make comments on the back, so that if they felt that they had something significant that they wanted to share, they could certainly write it on the back. And it does, the beginning of it says that it really just engaged the sentiment of the Hamden citizens. We can change that statement to be something different, but it's just to give a feel for where is everybody coming from. The estimated cost or approximate, based on the 270,000 assessed home value, which is what the, is the average in our town they tell us, okay? And the first item, which is the, how much was it when it was on call, I went to the 2017 budget, and that's how much we allocated. Do I mistake?
We're not picking you up.
Sorry. Now you are.
Is it on? I don't think so. Green light.
All right, so.
Now we are.
So I just went through the whole spiel on the fire department questionnaire. So what's the board think?
The number is a little, I know that the kid knew the present staffing, each house is paying 151,000 a year, and I'm not willing to pay enough for 151,000 a year.
Wait, what do you mean? I mean, this is 43. Oh, huh? Oh.
Excuse me.
I know how you're doing this year, but.
Excuse me. Could John Flynn please use the microphone?
There's no context here, and that's, it's a great thought, but there's no context. You say, should we return to the on-call? But there's.
Nancy.
Can you hear me?
I wasn't trying to interrupt you, I just wanted to point out that somebody wants to speak when you're finished.
Okay, fine. The problem is with the on-call is there's no context. I mean, the reason we went to a staff, a good explanation by the fire department, Mike at that time, was that there's a change in the demographics in Hamden. There aren't people like there were, gosh, 30 years ago, when you had four or five firefighters working in town, always ready to respond. And I think some of the numbers, and they saw the email today from Bob, and some of those numbers, I don't think were totally accurate, because they talked about some of the costs that are really, whether you have one shift, two shifts, three shifts, shouldn't be duplicated in the second shift and third shift. That is, you have a cost for training strikes, well, you wouldn't double that because you're the second shift, and you'd triple it because you're the third shift. So it's not part of the budget that we did from something like that. Well, I think it's a.
So we can certainly, we can certainly check.
Then we do need to.
I was going to check with Dick anyways, to see these accurate figures and.
Well, I checked with fire, but the other thing is that, and I think we have a concern, you're right in looking for a great way to get it back to us. How do we get information about? We've talked about the web, we've talked about the town meeting. The concern we have with voting here is that we have a concern with people coming in and honestly getting out. They're coming in, don't spend a lot of time, and go and ask them to spend extra 5% minutes filling out a survey, might not be what we're really trying to do here. Maybe you're great, hey, take this with you and get it back, drop it at Gary's, drop it at something, but don't be standing here filling out a survey when we're really trying to get people. Either says the number's over 100, and you expect the people to get more. It's been great, over the weekend, it was 60 something or better. I know, the doorstep should be setting up out there for cookies if they have, gosh.
Well, I think that we, they can have the option, you know, you could say, if you want to throw it out.
Well, I think that we, they can have the option, you know, you could say, if you want to throw it out, maybe.
You have a war and take away the.
You cannot, you can take it, you can leave it, whatever way is good for you, you know, you can do it in the hall and drop it off. So we have to check the figures.
I'm just wondering at the, at the election. You're working? I'm just wondering at the election, though you're giving the, something to vote on. And I don't know if that's too few of the people. Well, if we didn't do it, that would actually, you know? Town meeting probably yes, but the election.
Well, you could, you could certainly do it at the election if you're outside. Because that was our first, our first move was to go outside. So you were outside and, you know, so you're not in.
Yeah.
In, in the room itself, I think, might be questionable. You know, because it could be a more people coming out with the people.
For people to get confused.
It's just the wrong issue.
Excuse me, Mr.? I voted in this.
I'd like to get back to the original thing. You brought up a great point that you're concerned that, yes, there's a need, but are we, I want to say, throwing our money away because we're going to do this for who knows what we're doing in the future? That is, I'm putting an addition on it, but I could be selling their house tomorrow. So it'll be nice to know, and I believe it's the case because we've done this testimony in my office, that you could pick this up and use it again. And Don, you may want to check that with Ed and his contractor. But I'd be shocked, knowing what we do for school construction and our business, that that isn't something that could be, if you relocated, that police could go back with you because you're adding it in. It wasn't built in with the building. And that, but I think I would alleviate some of your concern that on a degree that's 50,000 again. You know, I'm putting the addition on, we're moving.
And the other problem we had is we don't do anything. We still have an obligation to do something to.
Well.
The perspective of fire. And I noticed that, that towns all across the Commonwealth are doing this. I mean, Hubbard Street's out. With the.
Right now. It's more than the past year. Yeah, it's been flexible, keep in mind, you know, up until 2018, we weren't bound by those.
Right, but now we are.
Well, I, I did pull up the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Labor standards. And they say that they have a recommendation to reduce exposure to these, these exhausts and fire stations, this car, this company has the safety and health. These are recommendations and not a requirement. So at least according to this document, whether it's 100% accurate, I don't know, but, and it gives recommendations of what you should do to bring in exhaust. So, you know, I think that that has to be, you know, considered. The other thing I thought was the, the idea of the attire that the people wear with their pants. Gear. The gear, the gear that they have on. If they clean, the tour I took, the tour I took, if they cleaned out the exercise area, which had dirt, dust on it, significantly as if it were not being used, and just put their gear in there, that would certainly reduce the amount of exposure that their gear would have. So there are some internal analysis that could be done that could rectify some of the problems.
So I'd like to, you know, we just, I'll go back to your point, why do we keep beating things over when we move on something? I'd like to see if we could, A, confirm that it's a, it's portable, but relocatable if we do something. Confirm that it's comp buy, that again, we can buy it without going out the bit. And confirm that we can get the money associated from the assessors so we don't change what we discussed with advisors and financial tonight.
What are you doing?
Give us information. I don't think, I don't think we go forward with anything. And I think that when, when, when the issue. Even if we get the money, we'll have our discussion, but even if the money comes through, I think the question is, do you spend it? Is that wise to spend? Is that wise to spending our money? We've got the design later, okay? Then if I could just get a decision on this thing, if we want to do it, we don't want to do it, where do we want to do it? And whatever. I think it's important that the public, part of our transparency thing is to have the public involved in being able to concretely express your opinion. I think that.
So the first, so the first question you have on here, I think that should be, should we turn to a volunteer fire department because of on-call now? Actually, is there an on-call second one?
They called it on the website, on-call. That's why I said on-call. That's what they, that's what they identified it as.
I don't know if you could, I mean, the single page before had more information. I thought was, if they're handing it out, I don't know. Why shorten it up? I mean, the single page has.
I don't know, does the single page have more information?
Well, a couple of things. Well, first of all, the quote at 49 is less than 50. So we do not have to do an advertised bid. This company is on the state contract. And so if the money becomes available, we could, we could, we could just go forward. As far as the information, once we move to this, I haven't looked at the other, other document that I drafted for a while. So I'm not ready to comment on it right now.
Nancy has a question.
She has a question. Still?
I got one.
Not in a bad light.
I got a question.
All right.
Don?
Yep.
In regards to the handing out something at the election, the voting's already started. Okay, I know my daughters have already voted. They're not going to come to the town hall to pick up anything. I think it's an idea, a good idea to get feedback from the, from the people. But I think at the election site is the wrong time to be doing that, the town hall. Or has a town ever done a mailing where they sent on a survey to the individual households? Okay, something to consider. Don, I think you asked a question earlier that really needs to be answered. And that is, and you know, I've said a lot of things about the fire department. What is the fire chief's plan to address some of those issues? Because waiting for the 50,000, I drive, drive through town, not every day, but several days a week. And I go past the fire department, the doors are closed. And you see them take the truck in and truck out. I don't see very often, but, you know, I don't see them doing anything to help their situation themselves. And I think myself, they need to be, say, hey, what, what do you, you got 50 items on this, this list. What are you doing to address the other 49? We're trying to get 50,000 for ventilation. And they're the ones that brought the ventilation issue up. But to me, you got one fire extinguisher in the whole building and you should have probably 12. I can't, that's, that's almost inexcusable for a fire department to only have one fire extinguisher in the entire building. So those are, you know, he, he needs to answer the rest of the questions. Mary Ellen's point about the exercise area having an inch of dirt all over it. What is, are they doing? And they're all good guys. I, I know some of them. I've met some of them and they, and they put out fires, great. But they need to be held a little bit to fire, so to speak, and, and answer some of those issues that are on that long report. Because there's, there are some serious, I understand town municipalities are exempt from OSHA regulations per se. But Massachusetts Department of Labor says you should maintain the same OSHA standard. It didn't talk about any penalties, but it did say on their website that you should follow all the OSHA regs. You know, I mean, I, I've been involved with OSHA inspection for seven weeks. And the numbers I sent to you guys in that million dollar range, that's real life. I, I've seen fines that big. I've dealt with, you know, seven million dollar fines. And obviously the town's not subject to those, but there's some serious issues there that I think the chief, and I like the chief. I think he's a great pick and all of that. But, you know, there needs to be some stuff done there.
One thing, one suggestion would be perhaps, again, we send things out to the Times, the Times and Griffith, it comes to every home. Maybe we go back to the whole page thing and have it run the copies for us. And Mary Ellen, that will give you a chance to maybe add a little more detail to some of these.
Like you had in your first one, we can do the full size. That's point is correct, that we've already missed some people that maybe wanted a chance to contribute. We can flush this out, put it out in the Times and have it dropped off. Gary will have a spot, the town hall can have a spot. People have had no trouble coming in and throwing the ballots into the box outside. Let them do that. I think your point is you want to get as many feedbacks as possible, and that's a great thing. You're concerned, what about people that are sending back two or three? Well, I'm not concerned about that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not obsessed with that, but I am obsessed with it having been easy enough so people can.
Sure.
Quickly do it and get the answers that you, you know, get their feelings known and, and go on their merry way.
Also a good, a good populist representation and hey, the time shows up to everybody. The scribe only gets done, I think we just about missing the window on the scribe. So let's put it in certain of the times. It's not that much money. I'll run the copies. I'll pick any color you'd like. I've got them all.
A way for feedback too is you can, almost everybody in town certainly has a computer. You could set up a survey monkey as a website some of you may are familiar with. And that would weed out. That could weed out the duplicates because I'm quite sure you have to put your email address in on those things usually. Nobody stops the ballot box.
She just wanted, she did say in the chat line that you could distribute them as they leave, I guess. And then they can walk around the building to the parking lot and drop, if they wanted to do the survey on, on site as they leave, drop it into one of those mailboxes.
Okay, so.
All right, well then. It would be good to read. Make it happen. It would, it would be, it would be good to, to get some closure on this by our next meeting. So you guys will give me whatever suggestions you have. I will try to incorporate them in a long form. For, so that it can go into the publication shortly. What, Mr. Marco?
Well, okay, so if we wait till the next meeting, then we will not be doing any trial runs at the.
No, I think, I think distributing through, we get trial run with some people, but I think distributing in the Times will get the saturation we want. Right. And if they don't want to send it back, well, that's an answer too, isn't it?
Yeah, as long, as long as you can represent a group. I mean, you have to get significant numbers.
Oh yeah, but I'm just. Well, Don and I are filling out 10 each. I hope, yeah, that's one.
Next item, 62 Pondview Drive.
Yeah, there's not, oh, Pondview itself is on our list, but yeah, I think clearly that, and I know Bob and I both talked to planning about this. It's not part of our purview. It's a paper street that was never accepted by the town. And I don't know who did that subdivision. He did a ton, yeah. Or it could have been Munson. Either way, it was on the plan but never accepted and as a paper street, it's not the town's responsibility. Typically in the past, the paper street has been dissolved and divided between the two Butters. Talking to Judge Howard, I think that's also Bob, that's.
I talked to him again this afternoon. That's exactly what the planning board thinks or understands. The question, John had said that in the past, there had been a vote to eliminate a paper street. The judge said, no, he's not voting and he doesn't think you have to vote. So I contacted town council. We'll get an opinion from them, whether or not the planning board should vote or not. But clearly this is not something, and, and Mark also agrees, this is not a situation where the town has an obligation to resurface the street, resurface the.
No, I think, the only reason I think you need a vote is because it does show on the maps, the assessors' maps. So therefore, they need an official vote with the assessors to change the GIS.
I think you're right. I, you know, in, in other instances, I know that there has been, it's been a vote to eliminate a paper street when it's clear that it wasn't going to be.
Oh, it's, Raymond Drive, I think it's littered with them probably in the Echo Valley, I think, had one meeting back at the Kenny Farm, I think, yeah.
Hi, this is John Moriarty. Thanks for hosting. So is the determination that the parcel's going to be split or there needs to be a vote on that?
The determination, I guess, will come from town council, but one way or the other, whether that vote is required or not, the street is owned by the Butters.
Yes.
You own, you own a portion of that street.
Thank you.
Sixth special town meeting warrant.
Yeah, the only one change, you had me down for ConCon and I'm pretty sure it was going to be Ted or somebody.
Right.
Ted wasn't going to be there, I think, but he was going to get somebody.
Well, that was back when it was the other one, as it goes. I don't know. Yeah. That's the only thing I, that would give, same thing, Monday, I guess, we'll decide.
Dispatch update, the last time we were concerned that we didn't have the figures, all the figures from Wilbraham. But they had sent us a 9/25 and they'd sent us this. And that pretty much matches up to what we have. So, you know, it contains the regular salaries, overtime, the holiday pay, part-time salary, shift differential, train salary, longevity incentive, and then that's their expense for equipment. I believe they own their, I believe they own their equipment, so there's no, we have lease equipment, so you see lease. I listed lease, you know, and all equipment. And then the only thing that they don't have in there is like the finance payroll costs, the processing of the payroll is just $500 on our. And Medicare, which is 1.45%, which would be about $6, $879.
Your retirement.
And retirement, retirement they have in the letter.
Yeah, right, okay.
A letter they wrote, the retirement's in there, $97,000, I believe it is. His letter. And also the insurance cost is in his letter, $54,000 something.
Which, again, is a variable. That's all about how many people take it versus, you know, it could be, worst case could be over 100.
114, I think.
Could be worst case, yeah. Which, oh my gosh, I can't even think what the school would be like. You know, what are you guys, what were they, 30% and 80%?
So the other, the other issue is is the issue that arose, arose in your, arose, right, in your blog about sending over the, the thing to the, to the select, our proposal. And we had decided to do that and we reviewed it at our August, October 8 meeting. In fact, at the October 8 meeting, you had said that you thought that the, that the advisory board was a working model. And we didn't put any financial information, but we need something to, to move this along. You can't just say we want management rights or whatever and not have any such vote for it, so.
I wrote down a quote, and what I said was, well, you're going to go forward and develop a management structure or discuss a management structure and bring that back to us.
Correct.
That's correct.
Right.
That's what you said. You didn't say the, the contract, okay? And then Mr. Marco said, and then Mr. Marco said, is this advisory committee that is stated in the contract something we can work from? And I said, yes. We, we.
So other words, you don't want us to, you don't want us in any way to speak to them, to give any kind of proposal or suggestion on what we think a management structure should be?
I don't think that discussion can happen until we have thoroughly looked at this and had a discussion of the various things that are in this. And we will look at other contracts and compare it to.
I've sent.
And said, you sent a VA email.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't discuss VA emails.
Okay, so you don't, you don't discuss, you don't discuss emails?
No, because that's a celebration.
I know. I sent, I know, I sent it in an email so you guys would have it for the meeting and we discussed it at length for the meeting, what we're having out on October 8.
You said that that's a good working model, go forward with that.
And then I. I re-read, I re-read it. I, I let you do the meeting, but okay, all right, it's over.
No, it's not over and done because you made allegations against me and that's not true.
Oh, I don't think that's true.
Yes, it is. You said I acted unilaterally. You said I acted without authority. You said I sent a contract, which I didn't.
I think, yes, I think the meeting's right. So you're going to go forward and develop a management structure.
Yeah, I'm talking about what you said at the meeting, I'm talking about what you said in your blog. Yeah, go look at your blog, please.
Hey, on my understanding, last night, you just named the names of the towns. Did you bring this update? That was your update.
What you said in your blog was that last night's meeting, Don noted I had made additional revisions to the air sheltering regions discussion, which I did not make additional revisions. Wolverhampton's town administration subsequently indicated we'd be sharing the doc, okay. He then single-handedly directed the town administration to force to Wolverhampton. Wolverhampton's town administration subsequently indicated we would be sharing the doc with the board this Monday. Hammond's board has never reviewed or detailed the original revision down ahead of the bill. Not true, we talked about it for half an hour on October eighth. And while in the second revision, which there was no second revision, it has been shared with other board members via email. It wasn't, because there's no second revision. No, it's not, because that was a wide sentence on September thirtieth. It was also not discussed. Furthermore, and perhaps more importantly, there was certainly no vote for the board authorizing the chair to offer the document to Wolverhampton. We said, one more example of an individual selection acting independently of the board as a team member. We agreed that we were going to talk to, we were going to discuss and develop a plan. How can we do it without dealing with the other party? We can't just sit here and say, okay, we're going to be, we're going to manage everything. You know, you have to send something along to us.
Again, I don't think we had authorization, Don.
You also, you also said, yes, you also said that. That being said, without an agreement on the managerial structure, giving both Hammond and Wolverhampton equal vote on all decisions, any discussion of the financial arrangement is not only premature but irresponsible. There was no discussion of the financial decision with anybody. We decided not to do that with the management structure. And you also implied that the, uh, that Hammond had no voice. That's not what I wrote there. Hammond had equal voice to police, the chief, the chief of police, the fire department, the emergency director. You agreed that that was a good working model. We need something to go forward with this, or we could just say screw it, not to write it. So I took great umbrage in what you wrote in your blog. I don't care if you disagree with me on a vote or anything else, but I don't, I don't appreciate saying things that I didn't, saying things I didn't do. Now I make that very clear. The next item on the agenda is the selectmen reports.
I've got, uh, meeting, I think with housing authority next. That's where I'm going to walk into the survey thing and I talk about what they want, what they're looking for from the town.
But I think for us, that, I'm trying to talk about surveys, that wouldn't you do something about the, uh, what? We're going to do a survey in that first?
I know what, after the employees first, what they felt, you know, I mean, because the whole first discussion was do some of the departments need nighttime hours? I still would like to go back to restoration, that and, you know, the, oh, four, that when we had my days. Maybe not days, but then per se, but back in the day days. When all of us were young. But if you're a part of the, what they see for me, they think, come in, you and I don't, we don't, you know? But you hear around town maybe more than I do. What are people looking for? They say, hey, it would be nice if this department was available one night a week or something like that. Typically Parker Rec, they have nighttime things per sport, something like that. So again, I go back to, let's ask the departments first and then we'll go back to the public.
All right, all right, I got, I got you off target. Housing Authority.
There's a, they're a great, great group, great group.
The Housing Authority survey.
Well, the whole thing is we're going to survey about the crossing. Where do they want to go? This goes back and then back to the sidewalk discussion. If they're like, look, I don't need the whole buffet, I don't want a loaf of bread, so to speak, that's what we're talking about.
Okay. Anything else?
A couple of the boards, we don't meet till next week. All right, and, uh.
If I could add to that discussion, I asked the town employees, twice now, once, uh, around March, more recently, uh, about the whole hours situation. Said that the selectmen were considering, um, an extended day of the time. And I think it's fair to say that, uh, that there isn't, that there wasn't anyone who said anything positive without changing the hours.
That's a surprise.
That is to be expected, that's to be expected, I think. The issue for the town is, will the citizens be served better if a decision is made and changed the hours? I, we all get used and accustomed to the way we do the job and, um, also, I mean, there are other factors as well. There are some who have obligations outside the town hall that, uh, they've accommodated those obligations with, with the way they, uh, you know, they do their, their hours and so forth. It is, I think it is a bit chaotic, uh, because you have employees working all sorts of different hours. But I have to say this, I haven't had a complaint yet. On one instance, has complained about the way we do it. So I'm not sure there is a demand out there for the change, uh, in the survey. What I'm going to try and do is set up a survey monkey on the website and see what we can generate for, for the, uh, our department. If that works out reasonably well, then maybe we can do a survey of the public. I do know this, that in other communities where I've worked, typically it's, it's very typical that we had an extended day. This is which we, we spent Tuesdays, the night of the selectmen meeting, uh, to seven o'clock. So if you're a department head and you have to meet with the select board, you're right there anyway. You have to go on call. And I, I looked at the usage and typically very few people came in. Although those who did, were thankful that we did have the extra hours because they worked your regular nine-to-five job and they, they would be able to come to town all of a sudden. So thanks back.
Okay. Um, any board of health reports?
We're, we're having a meeting, um, the first Monday in November. And that's about, that, that.
Any discussion about Halloween?
So if I can share on Halloween, um, again, surveying the other towns, nobody wants to make the call. Like a couple of towns told me, we can't legislate, so to speak.
Yeah, because it's not like a real holiday, right, right.
Some towns have shared that they're concerned that because Springfield has banned Halloween, for whatever reason that means, I mean, cops are going to arrest every little goblin walking down the street, probably not. That the kids who can't get candy in Springfield are going to go to Lawn Meadow, East Lawn Meadow, Hampton, et cetera, Wolverhampton, et cetera. I believe Lawn Meadow has done a, a ban or recommendation against it, however they want to call it. Uh, right now, the only thing official in town is that, uh, the Lions Club, the library, the Baptist Church are coming together to do an afternoon thing at the church. But in terms of like street by street, what's the whole thing back in the day? Turn your light off. Turn the barking date, the barking, barking dog tape on very loud and they go by. Um, I mean, that's, it's just, it's, it's personal preference, it really is.
Responsibility.
Exactly right.
And if you don't want to go, don't go.
Right.
If you do want to go, go to the places that have their lights on or go to your relatives.
Right.
That seems to me. You don't want to go, don't go.
Town administrators report?
Can I do, can I do one of the things? I wanted to bring up on schools. I did go through the ClearGlove, um, program, which is excellent, excellent. Went through the schools part of it, however, which is equally informative. Um, and, uh, in most, they do compare us to two, they compare you to schools within, um, your same demographic. And they go by the number of students in the schools, the income of the students and the, uh, distance from Hampton. And they go within forty-nine mi, forty-five miles, I guess it is, of Hampton to get the distance. And the places they combine up, compare us to are Quabin, Dudley, Charlton and Ashburton, Westminster. Okay? And, um, but the interesting part of the whole thing was that on average, um, or yeah, I guess on average, um, that we are twelve percent higher in our expenditures than any of those communities, okay? In some of the communities, like for example, in our community, fixed costs, for example, are seventy-eight percent higher. And out of district placements, now I'm hoping this is a mistake because it doesn't seem like it could possibly be, but it said nine thousand two hundred and seventy-two percent.
Above.
Above. And now that is, is out of school.
What country are they going to?
Oh, I don't know where they're going, but they must be going around the world for this education. I'm hoping it's a mistake, I really am, because it seems just so out of whack that I didn't see. But it is, I'm certain that that's a, that's an area that all districts are, have struggled with and are always high and whatever. But other areas like instructional services is nineteen percent higher than the region that they're comparing us to and administration is fifteen percent higher. So in a fourteen million dollar budget and twenty-five percent of that fourteen, of that savings is, is, is significant amounts of money. Um, I was going to bring this to the attention of Maura and, um, Michelle to see if they wanted to do something with it from the school board way of looking at it.
Why don't you talk to them, ask them how much they have in their E and D?
Explain to me about the, like there, it's discretionary, right? Now, I remember back when they had the budget presentation, you talk about you have your, your, so to speak, the minimum you have to spend.
Right.
But then you have discretionary and they said like Amherst was like so much higher than everybody else. They were, right? You know, they were spending seventeen per student. It's.
Yeah, yeah.
So how much of that, obviously there's other districts don't take advantage of or don't discretionary fund as high as we do, I guess.
I'm not sure that that's true. I would say they're higher than discretionary funds, probably.
Well, you said we spend, we spend more.
Well, no, no, they're, we're, we are hot, we're, we, in these categories, we are spending more than they are, but I don't have discretionary funds is one of my categories that I wrote down.
Well, I thought, what's it called? Minimum local contribution?
E and D.
Yeah.
No, the minimum local contribution.
Okay, oh, what the state tells you, yeah. What the state tells you.
And then you can go over that.
You can go over that as much as you want.
And so our number must be, so our number must be higher than these others if our, if we're roughly equivalent to this district, but we're spending more, then we must be making a choice to.
To spend more.
To spend more.
To spend more.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing.
Your question is.
There's almost nothing that they bring to the board that they say to you, unless they go, yes.
How can we tell then if they're getting better bang for the buck?
And they're not. That was, that was another point, is that, is that we're not getting the educational return or the fiscal return, I thought, from reading, from what I read on it. Okay, that, you know, we're not, we're not, if, if you were spending this amount more and you were, you know, getting in the ninetieth percentile, ninety-fifth percentile, then you'd say, well, it's worth the bang. I mean, it's worth the buck, I guess you'd say, because we're getting the return, but we're not even getting the return.
Great question for Maura and Michelle.
Yes, it is. So I'm going to bring that to them and, but I do think that it's something that, um, we, we should be pursuing actively, even though it's not our ultimate responsibility. It is, and I think people should, everybody I've seen, I've told, go to ClearGlove. Because I do think it's very, it was very helpful.
You know, all the best school systems are improving above the minimum requirement.
Yes.
But now all the school systems that are improving above the minimum requirement, see the desired result.
Exactly. Exactly. Even like instructional services was fourteen percent higher. And yet they're saying that they have to hire new teachers in order to, to give the, I mean, you had twenty kids in your class, if you taught them in two sections of two days each, you'd have ten in each group. How do you get a hundred and, I don't know how it works. I mean, they have not been able to explain it so I could understand it. So, um, I think that's something we should be taking on as a, hold them accountable a little bit more for the amount that they spend.
Maybe ask them to come into a meeting, you know, Michelle and, or.
Town administrators report?
Well, we've already been through Halloween.
Right.
Uh, Amoresco hasn't changed the conservation restrictions. Still on hold, because, and your wildlife haven't communicated their decision yet. Uh, we have already dealt with the Pondview Drive. We should have a decision back in town council in a day or two. Uh, early voting, uh, it's happening. We did post on the website, the dates and the times when early voting is, uh, taking place, as well as, uh, in a robo-call. And I'm sold today that there's a steady stream of people coming in.
That's good.
Uh, the Highway Garage contractors have been notified that the board of selectmen have made a decision to reject all bids. I have made another request to town employees to get their job description forms completed. I think we're, we're about ready to wrap that up. As you know, we posted ClearGlove. I hope residents, particularly those who are very interested in transparency, and we always hear that term, uh, in public discussions, uh, take a look at that. They have need to spend some time with it. I noticed that some said, well, you don't have enough on the school system. But if you go down.
You have to go down.
There is a lot of data. Uh, we did open, reopen town hall today after two weeks. Uh, all employees, uh, brought me certificates that they had been tested and were negative. And as you are aware, I'm preparing for the new round of COVID reimbursements, uh, which, uh, we're about ready to, to submit.
Hey, Mr. Chair, could I, um? So in December, obviously we have a, a plan that Bob put forward about department meeting, et cetera. If after the town meeting, Bob could, uh, come up with the documents we want to hand out. I think what we've been talking about, look, let's not be late to the party. Let's have all this stuff geared up and ready to go. War review, advisory review. So when we have our State of the Union address at the beginning of December with the different depart, we know exactly what we're putting out. That should be our November focus, I believe. You know, looking forward to next year. We've heard from the financial team, we need to be concerned and we need to lead that way as our board.
Well, I, I am concerned that it's always last minute, I know that.
Well, I think we were, we had much responsibility there too.
Thirty years, it's been always last minute. Oh, yes, I go, yes.
I've been here the whole thirty years.
Most do adjourn.
Bob, Bob.
Nice headphones.
Before you adjourn, I had asked for audience for a minute. Um, for this ConCon, Amoresco is going to be at the town landfill on Wednesday. Hopefully it's going to be a full day environmental engineer walkthrough. We need access to the site. Who do we see? Jane, Mark or the police?
Jane is here, she has heard you and, uh, she will make sure you have access.
Okay, I don't know the time they're coming yet. I don't know if it's going to be seven in the morning or ten in the morning. They, I don't know, but it's going to be sometime in the morning and it'll probably be there most of the day, I would assume.
Well, Jane doesn't get here until six AM, so you got to wait till then.
Okay.
Hey Ted, are you going to be at the town meeting?
No, John.
No, okay. One of your board?
Uh, the only one who may show is someone you're not interested in, to my knowledge at the moment.
Okay, thank you. We'll work it out. Second.
Second, on favor? You need to put this, Bob.